Having to keep track of what's on.
This is a sinking chair.
We're having chair issues.
Caller, bid my meeting to order would all rise to pledge allegiance and remain standing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have them on the silence, please. We've got a couple of change up in the agenda. We will be approving two sets of minutes here for October the 21st and January the 7th, which is an add-on. And we'll be taking off the recognition retirement on section B. It will be rescheduled for February. Do I hear a motion to accept?
I move second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Public comment time. We've got some folks signed up here to sing. First off is Kim Miller.
Hello, my name's Kim Miller, and I just wanted to come and thank you guys for allowing me to be here. Mr. Walker asked me to come and kind of give you some information. However, I felt like that my information would be secondhand, so I have invited some folks that are working boots on the ground in Ash County. But I want to thank our county for being willing to help our neighbors, because obviously Ash County are our neighbors. And so with that said, I'm just going to go ahead and let these folks go ahead and speak.
You can speak your name if you would.
Afternoon. My name is Michael Harzog. I am the executive director with Ash Harvest Ministries over in Ash County, North Carolina. And I'd like to thank Kim for calling me up and inviting us over and for each and every one of you all for sitting and willing to listen to what we say. What I would like to present to you today is the fact that Ash County is still struggling with the recovery. We have families who reach out daily needing help with a place to stay. I've had three this morning reach out to me looking for a camper to live in, because a lot of them, they've been moving around and staying with families. And the ones who are, let's say, let's say they was renting before the storm. They're not getting any vouchers or anything to go into a motel or anything to cover any housing. So they have nowhere to go. And the campers is really their only hope. And we have placed, I do believe, I'm just going off of my head, but there is like 40 or 50 campers already in Ash County, and that's the ones I know of. Now, again, I have right now at least seven individuals or families waiting for me to find them a camper to put on. It's either family land or property that they own where their house was destroyed, that kind of thing. And a couple are looking for maybe an RV site or something like that to place a camper in. We have, Ash Harvest Ministries has been working since day one in this. And to be quite honest with you, the headway would be what I would consider minimal of in this recovery. And the reason I say that is because there's still a lot of debris everywhere, a lot of homes still damaged, a lot of folks still displaced. You know, if the vouchers for the motel stays had not been extended this last time, we had 60 individuals or families that was coming out in one day, one day with nowhere to go. So Ash County is still got a tremendous need, tremendous need. And we scramble and try to find campers everywhere we can find them. I've got individuals out of Pennsylvania, Ohio, that I can reach out to sometimes. And sometimes they'll be able to bring one, sometimes they won't. So if we do get hit with a voucher ending, we're in trouble. And I don't know what these families are going to do, because number one, we have no housing available even to rent, because a lot of the houses that was rentals may have been destroyed or damaged and that kind of thing, or they've already been fulfilled and they don't have any more room. Now, with that being said, you know, I think what mainly I wanted to come over and to just let you know that Ash County is still, still searching for help and struggling and would welcome anything that y'all may offer. And I know of a lot of them that would be very happy. I had a young lady on the way over. She just recently, she's got a baby that is less than a month old and nowhere to stay because her house was destroyed. And now she has, and she's been trying to stay with different friends and so on. And I think it's getting very difficult for her because a lot of the individuals may not be living quite the way they ought to be living, that kind of thing. And with a newborn, she's trying to do better. So there's stuff like that that really tires at you, really tires. It does me. And I'm desperately looking for something to solve her problem. And I'd just like to again say thank y'all for taking your time to listen to us. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can. If I can't, I'll get you to answer and get back to you.
We're going to try to help you out, I think, with our campers here in a few minutes. It's on the agenda here.
Well, we.
Need to be somewhere where somebody can use, certainly do.
We appreciate that. I mean, we definitely, they definitely be put to use immediately.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? No, this is public comments, not for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. David Higgins.
Good evening, folks. My name is David Higgins. I live in Ennis, North Carolina, and I've been chief of the fire department 27 years now down at Glate Creek. But what I'm here for tonight is I see you coming up about the concessions at the fire grounds. And I'd like to see you, somebody local instead of somebody out of the county. The person's been running it, run it the last two years. And as far as I know, she's done a good job. But she has volunteered all fall and all winter helping hurricane victims. We still have stuff at the firehouse. She's out there every day working, every day of the week. And she is helping the citizens of Allegheny County tremendously. And it's not somebody from outside that you come in and never see again. So I'd like to, before you take that into consideration. And this gentleman just got up, I'd like to talk to him before he leaves, because I think I know a place he might get some campers. So that could help him. So thank y'all for your time.
We called him.
Hello, folks. I'm Joy. I guess most of y'all know who I am. I'm Joy. I've run the concession the last two years. I am an Enus residence. I have been coming up here since 2011 with a concession trailer. I've served this community serving food from that trailer since 2011. Since I've had the concession, I have hired six to eight residents from this county. I have bought supplies and purchased local. Like David said, I've been running the Allegheny, I say the Allegheny, the Enus, what do we call it? The community.
Firehouse, firehouse.
That's what they call it, the firehouse, firehouse. But we've been running the, that's not what we call it, David.
Donation.
Donation center. We have been running that donation center since the end of September. And we have propane and blankets and food and diapers and formula. And we run it five days a week. We've got three campers right now. We're fixing to put two out. We've still got three families that's homeless. One man's living in a car. One man's living in a building. Tomorrow, we're taking two and getting them placed. And but I was hoping you guys would really consider me for the concession again this year, because I have run it for two years. I've been in the business for 15 years. And I'd just like to see you folks keep it local. And I have a good working relationship with everybody in the county, Melanie, the health lady. And I guess that's all I've got. Just like to see it stay local, support local, stay local. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Come on up to the microphone.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Riley Oats. I work with the United States Small Business Administration. I just wanted to come by and make sure you guys are all aware of our disaster relief program that we have available. We have two types of loans. We have physical damage loans and economic injury loans. We have physical damage loans for small businesses, nonprofits, homeowners, renters. Small businesses are eligible for up to $2 million. Homeowners are eligible for up to $500,000. And then homeowners and renters are eligible for personal property damages up to $100,000. And then we have economic injury loans. Those are for small businesses and non-for-profits. Those are for working capital loans. We have a little bit different requirements. We look at your ability to repay and your credit history, but it's not necessarily based on your credit score. So I really encourage people to apply even if they have a lower credit score. We have the best interest rates available. We are funded through the taxpayer, so our rates can go as low as 2.8% for homeowners, 4% for businesses. And that's up to a maximum term of 30 years. So you can get the SBA loan if you have physical damages before your insurance settles, and you just pay back the SBA loan with your insurance money. But you can use it as a bridge gap. You can't use it on secondary homes or pleasure boats unless you're renting your house out, like you have a commercial property or like a single-family, multifamily home you rent. Or if you have a boat, if you use it for a business purpose, we can provide you with funds. We have up to 20% of your physical damages available for mitigation. So that's on top of the physical damage loan. So you can build a retainer wall for landslides, or you can try to do some kind of flood mitigation for your home. And we can also refinance existing mortgages for the value of the physical damage. And we can also relocate people if that's something they choose to do. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be available after the meeting.
Thank you.
One thing, could you do a printout of that information, that contact info, and get it to Danielle so he can pass that out to us, if you don't mind?
Sure. Yeah, I have copies I can, I can hand out in a minute. No problem.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment time. And I'm going to slide these minutes in right here. If everybody's had a chance to look over this for October, the October 21st and January the 7th.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 10:21, 24, and 1:07, 25, and give the clerk the right to check, to change, correct any areas.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Five oh. All right. Consent agenda. Ms. Rita Miller.
Good afternoon. If there's any questions about anything on the consent agenda, I'll be glad to answer them.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Questions? If not, all in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presenting the board, like I said, the recognition retirement is going to be next month. So we'll move on down. Soil, water, update. Mr. Eric Hamilton.
Afternoon. Excuse my hair, toboggan hair. A couple months ago, NRCS David Tucker came before y'all about EWP, EWP program. That letter's been sent in, it's been accepted by the state. We're going to be doing a rollout in the coming month or so, looking at sites. Just wanted to update the board. When David came before you, it was a 75-25, which was a 75% federal, 25% county match. That has been changed. It's 100% funded through the federal's side. So that's just a big update I wanted to give you all on that. And then we'll be rolling that out in the coming, probably next month or so. We're working on teams now. Also, Danielle's got on there about Veterans Park. Hurricane Helene did a little bit of damage. We've probably got about 50 to 75 feet of bank erosion down there along the soccer field. It's on the opposite side. Crew was supposed to come in the 20th, which was Monday, but due to the cold weather, we're looking at probably next week or the following week to get that addressed and get it straightened up. That's all I've got, unless y'all got any questions.
Good news, 75 to 100%.
Yeah. Like I said, it's totally funded.
Any questions, comments?
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Finance update. Ms. April Hand.
So I handed out the finance update just prior to the meeting. You should have that in front of you. Year-to-date revenue, $14,748,302.92, which represents 69% of our approved budget. Year-to-date expenditures, $13,699,180.72, which represents 64% of our year-to-date expenditures from our approved budget. And then we're 54% into the year with our approved budget of $21,407,775. Bank balance as of today, in the checking account, we have $6,167,672.11. In the saving, public savings account, we have $18,722,462.42, for a total of $24,890,134.53. We are also handling the $15 million grant that the town received for water and sewer upgrades. So that has been set up in a separate public savings account, and your total is just below $15,156,306.95. Our net financials for the year, taken to account the revenue and expenditures, $14,049,122.20. And then our audited fund balance for last fiscal year, $15,110,128. Can I answer any questions about the finance report?
Looks good.
Okay. Your second page is your year-to-date local option sales tax. Year-to-date, we have received $613,944.54. The next page represents the same amount of time last year, and we had received $587,625.15 compared to last year. Your third page is actually the quarter cent sales tax that was established about 18 months ago now. Year-to-date, we have received $171,481.1. And your next page is the comparison to last year, and it was $167,302.8. So can I answer any questions about the sales tax report?
Quarter cent, year to year is holding pretty.
It is. Yeah. It stays between 30 and 35,000 coming in each month. Yeah.
We'll move on down. Sales update. Mike, Mr. Director, Mr. David Spicer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. A few things this morning, or this evening and afternoon. Courthouse, we'll talk a little bit about it first. The courthouse, front entrance and walkway, of course, has been held up a little bit by the weather. Not a suitable time to be pouring concrete. So as soon as the weather breaks, we'll, they'll get back on that and get those things taken care of. The boilers are up and running. Factory tech came on the 13th, got those boilers programmed according to factory specs, and everything has been pretty good on those. They have been a few times when there's a few bugs that's got to be worked out between the boilers and some of the controls. So they're on top of that, and they're, they're taking care of that. We have the Wi-Fi set up, so those boilers will send an alert to the phones with an app. So Tommy Stanley and Koi with Stanley Heat and Air have got that on their phone, and they've been getting the alerts, and they've been here in a reasonable amount of time to get that back going. So they're working those things out, and that should be solved very shortly. The windows, they should be here next week. Been waiting on those. So hopefully by the time they get here, we'll have a little bit of break in the weather, and they can get those put in accordingly. The painting and the carpet, that's ready to be done and should be done hopefully next week. So they'll be inside the courthouse, working in the courtroom, working and painting. The door that was in the back hallway, they ran into a problem with the door frame. It wasn't, it wasn't designed correctly. So they've had to order a different one to bring in for that. So that's coming, it should be here, should have been here today. So that, they'll be put in, and then that part can be finished and ready for the painting when that happens next week. The electrical is about 90% done now. They did install the new fire alarm panel yesterday, so all that's up and going. So everything there is like it's, like it should be. The Wi-Fi, different ports within the courthouse, and this is something that's separate from our construction phase, but this is something that the courts is doing in itself. So this is, is all supplied by the state of North Carolina. All that cabling is done, and they're supposed to be here the first or second week of February to finish all that up. So that's, that's up and going. Transfer facility, I had reported last time that TRC would have us something to look at before this meeting. Unfortunately, they have been plagued with sickness as, as other places with flu and COVID and RSV and those things has hindered them from accomplishing that task. So they assured me they would have it to me by January 31st. So once that's here, we will meet and discuss that, and that will go out to all of you, and we'll get that kind of underway. And you can see kind of where we are and where we stand with that. Coal mingle, we had four tons. Cardboard, we had 3.45 tons. We have 9.6 tons of scrap metal, which yielded the county $1,935. The weather's still not cooperating with us as far as getting the retaining wall put back up. We're going to put in a catch basin so that the drain lines and all will run into, and we can wrap the water away from the retaining wall. So once that's done, the weather cooperates, we'll have that up and going. The Cat 938, as I reported, was supposed to be here the week, the next, well, actually on the Friday, after we had the last meeting, it did come in on time. That thing has been absolutely a wonderful piece of equipment. So thank you for allowing us to obtain that. And I'm sure that those guys over there at the transfer facility, they're, they're enjoying that piece of equipment. So after the weather gets everything, we get where we can do some things. We have some problems with the pavement over there at the transfer facility. So there's a little bit of heaving because of the cold weather, the freezing underneath asphalt. So we're going to work on getting those corrected. We did have water froze at 90 South Main that was in the meter out front. That has since been fixed. The courthouse annex, the GFCI tripped. So the heat, heat tape wasn't working, but that has been corrected. The animal shelter had a frozen pipe, which that resulted in some plumbing. So they, they went out there and took care of that, but it's all back up and going. Everything's took care of. I had a problem with the hot water at Daymark. That was sediment that was in the water heater. So that's been cleaned out and taken care of, and now that's back up and going. So all that's up and took care of. For animal control, we had two that we assisted the shelter department, 11 wellchicks, eight dogs and or cats and five piffies. Had six running at large, had one quarantine that was a bite, had one trapped, and 65 hours, 29 calls, and 502 miles. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
On the courthouse, I noticed they've torn up the steps and everything going up.
Yeah.
The public still has pretty good access?
The ramp, the ramp that comes off of the parking lot, all of that has been put in place, and they do have access to that, as well as a handrail that they can hold on to there to, to help for those folks that may be in need of that.
And the rock wall that goes down, all the way down towards what I call the old Allegheny news.
Yes, sir.
Down at those steps, that is also going to be repaired, correct?
We're going to repair that, yes, sir. And we're going to repair the top of that wall. We have ordered the same capstone that's going to be placed right there where the new steps is going to be. And that'll go all the way out to those other steps, and it'll come around the other side, all the way around the corner, so it looks the same.
And they're going to fix the wall. And they're gonna fix the rocks that are falling down?
Yes, they, they've got some rocks, and they're matching those to, to take care of that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was talking, I had a meeting with Shane Glenn the other day, and he was talking about there was still some issues with the heat in the federal prison side. Is that something you've been involved with?
Yes, the parts has been ordered, and they should be here next week, but it's still running. It's still running, it's just not as efficient as it should be.
Yeah, 'cause I know we dealt with this last year, and I don't think we got it fixed last year, or something happened. I don't know what the deal was, same problem, I think. So it sounds like they problem-solved it, and maybe this time it's gonna work.
Yeah, we hope so.
That's it.
You heating system at the courthouse, it's been a good time to check it out for about four or five days. How is it compared, how's it done in your, in your words? I mean, is it, is it keeping the heat up what it should be?
Yes, sir, it is. There's two boilers there now. They run alternating. They're, one, one boiler is as efficient as the old boiler, which was a lot arduous, or was. They have been no complaints about coldness in the courtroom.
Well, it's been the coldest weather we've had in some years, and it'd be a good time to check all that in.
Yes.
Is it, what's the completion date for the courthouse?
It's about the middle of March.
Well, that's all, anybody else got anything?
Brush ain't dumping over the landfill, David. Is it muddy over there?
It has been. We've been able to keep it down and keep gravel on it, we've been able to keep some stone on it, so it's, and that, that's, that's soon coming to an end. FEMA is supposed to be completed the middle of February, and to remind the public, the end of February is the cutoff date for our fee wave for that debris from the disaster of Helene. So we have someone here that should be starting Monday on grinding, so they're gonna get rid of that brush pile, and FEMA has talked to him as well about grinding their brush, so all those piles will be gone pretty soon.
What are they gonna do with all the mulch, just give it away, or?
They're hauling their mulch to Burke County, and our mulch will be stored there on site, and as soon as we get all the temperatures according to the state standards, then we'll be able to sell it.
Got a question, just 'cause I don't know, is all this mulching that they're doing along the state highways, the FEMA cleanup recovery crews, is that coming in over there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I didn't know.
Yes.
I know they started on eighteen this morning, didn't lost weight, maybe coming this way.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we appreciate it, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move it on down, general business, Blue Ridge Rising, Mr. Larry Van Heus.
Good afternoon. So I came on board the Chamber Three, and one, I started hearing about this organization, Ridge Rising, not so much an organization, but an initiative, and I didn't know what that was. I'm familiar with Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, which is the fundraising arm for the Parkway, and they're under the purview of the National Park Service. And then Blue Ridge Parkway Association is Parkway. But I didn't know what Blue Ridge Rising was, and they had a great big event that I wasn't able to attend, so I didn't get the information at the time. But I did look into it to see, because the Parkway is so important to this community and to this area. And I've got a little bit of information, I wanna give you the background, Ridge Rising before I ask the ask, okay? So I was taking right off of their website. Blue Ridge Rising is an initiative of the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, the nonprofit partner. Cross jurisdictional relationships, foster economic development with the, within the region's gateway communities, which we are one, and establish unified regional voice. The Parkway is the most visited unit of the national park system, with over fifteen-point-nine million visitors each year. The four hundred and sixty-nine miles of the Parkway, seven percent of that Parkway is here in Allegheny County, which is the largest percentage of any county on the Parkway, either in Virginia or North Carolina. So most of them is that the Parkway is a catalyst for promoting regional tourism and a significant contributor to the regional economic vitality. In, in actual dollars, they add one point four billion dollars to the economies of Virginia and North Carolina. And the purpose with Blue Ridge, creating Blue Ridge Rising was to bring together these gateway communities into one voice, and, and as they say, establish a collective regional vision that celebrates our shared culture, protects our unique natural resources, and strengthens the regional economy. And we're all for all of that. So as I looked into this, I said, I wanna be a part of that for Allegheny County. I think we need, we need to stay in touch with that, because the only way that you can really have a voice in something is if you're part of it. So about that time, they put out a call for ambassador applications for basically any kind of local, regional people that wanna be involved with Blue Ridge Rising and be a voice for their. And to that, it turned out to be much more difficult than I expected, and I had to answer a lot of questions back and forth. But just recently, I found out that I was appointed as the ambassador for Allegheny County. And vague, another thing that they were sending out was counties along the way, way communities, was a request for.
We go microphone, it's going and coming.
Okay, Bogotown County, I believe, is in Virginia, and, and then, and North Carolina were two of the first to do this, they basically passed a resolution just supporting the initiative of Blue Ridge Rising. Now, there's no money that they're committing to, it's just saying, hey, we wanna be part of this, we are part of this community, and this impacts us. And the whole idea is that, that the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation can use that, those resolutions as, as a government impetus and say, hey, see, all these communities need help. And this particular resolution even references Hurricane Helene, and how it impacted our area, and there's need still for funds for recovery. So I assume you all got the copies of the resolution. I wanted it for our benefit to include information that was particular for Allegheny County. And if there's any questions that you have about the resolution, I'm just asking that we consider passing this as a resolution for Allegheny County towards Blue Ridge Rising and what they're trying to do. Again, they're not asking anything from us, but basically passing this resolution saying, we agree with what you're trying to do, we support it, and we wanna be involved.
Bobby, you got a question?
I, I just wanna be perfectly clear that I understand you're not asking for the county to put in any money into this resolution.
Absolutely not. What they're asking basically is, will you go with us to the feds and ask for money? And the way we go with them is through this resolution.
Anybody else have any questions?
You ain't got nothing to do with that. You ain't got no idea when they gonna have the Parkway back open, I don't guess. Seems like it's been closed a year.
Well, my understanding, and this is just word of mouth, is that a big portion of Allegheny County's Parkway will be open in late spring of this year. And I'm excited about being ambassador, because I can push that effort. We have a, a Blue Ridge Rising meeting in July, but the ambassadors are gonna get together even before that, so I'm hoping that we can push that along. You know, I live right on the Parkway, so it's very, I'm very interested in what's going on.
Parkway's been good, good to us.
Absolutely.
People come off through here. Okay.
I just wanna be sure that Heather's read through this resolution, and Mr. Sheffield's read, read through it, and I'd like to get their input if they support it, to be sure that we're all on the same page.
Yes, I've read through it, and, and I support it.
And I feel the same. It's, it's not an ask for money, it's just support that we would provide for the fact that, that they would be going to ask for money. We support that, so that it would be used potentially for the Parkway in our area. So it's not an ask for money, so I was okay, that was my first question, too. Where's the ask for money, but there is none.
I can. Just, to me, to me, we just, it sounded like to me, we just need to be a part of this group to be on that train to go ask for these things, so we can get our name in there, like we're a part of the Parkway deal. To me, it makes sense, it makes sense, but.
We don't wanna be overlooked.
Correct.
You know, as, as being a gateway community that really relies significantly to the income that's generated from the Parkway, we want our voice to be front and center, and I, and I can be loud, and so I'll be loud on all, on our behalf.
I wanted to add to that and just say, thank you for actually reaching out and seeing these, finding these different things that could be benefit Allegheny, so I appreciate that. And while you're standing there, I wanted to ask you, I was looking at the TDA report, and I noticed that on the Mountain Heritage Festival, it looked like you done quite well, like, looks like the income was twenty-five thousand, eight. So I, I'm not questioning, I'm just like, I'm commending you on it, like, that's pretty, that's really incredible. Is that comparable to numbers last year, or do you know?
Oh, it's the best year we've ever had.
Best year.
Yeah. Income-wise, we blew our budget up, which was great, 'cause we're gonna put that money towards even improving the, the event this coming year. And attendance-wise, we were able to use geofencing. Actually, we got a, a, what's the word, a demo from a geofencing companies, and, and I said, can you check this against past years for the Mountain Heritage Festival? And we were far and away the largest, we had approximately sixty-five hundred people attend this year.
That's pretty, pretty incredible. Again, I wanna, I do appreciate your leadership in this, and not, nothing to take away what Lisa did, because Lisa was a hard worker, too, but I do wanna say that we really appreciate what you bring to the table, Chamber Commerce, and all the work that you're doing for all these good things that we're seeing, so really wanna say thank you.
Thank you, I will give Lisa credit where it's due, she's my unpaid consultant.
Amy, you have been a big asset over, and we appreciate I go along with Amy, but you done a really good job. It was beautiful weather last year for the, it was, I was there that day, too, it was a good, good show that day.
Yeah, we, we ordered good weather again for this year.
Do that for the fair.
We put that in the budget, everything.
Anybody else got a question? We need the, for information, we wanna vote on this, we'll wait until next week. Vote on this in two weeks.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to echo what, what my board has said. I think, I can't speak for Garrison, but Garrison and I had a, had a great meet, you know, first meeting with you, and, and I've had an opportunity to interact with you several times, and feels like we're in really good hands with your leadership and with the chamber, and look forward to strong partnership.
Thank you, we're excited about it.
Would you, would you care to take just a second to give just a quick explanation to the board? I thought this was the most interesting piece of our last chamber board meeting. Would you care to explain what geofencing is to the board, so we understand what that, what that is, so the rest of the board understands what that is?
Certainly. When geofencing came out, it was kind of a hit or miss accuracy-wise, but it's, I mean, how many of y'all here have a cellphone in your pocket right now, or somewhere on your person? What it does is that the geofencing companies can actually outline a map of whatever area you specify in, in our festival. We, we only mapped the area where the street was closed for the festival, so we didn't map the whole town for that demonstration. But they were actually able to, within five percentage points, able to tell us exactly how many people were there, what kind of beer they drank, what were their interests, where they came from, where they left, where they went to after they left. And it's just powerful software, and we're actually looking into a subscription with it, at least for several years, so that we can kinda really prove to ourselves, and to you all, and to other boards as well, as, when people are asking for money, do they have a valid ask? You know, is there really people coming to this event? Are, are, you know, what's the best place to advertise for an event? And so it, it's powerful software, and, and, and it's very reliable at this point. The company that we're dealing with is actually the best fencing in the country, and they're very expensive, and we've negotiated a price that's literally fifty percent of what they normally get, because we're just like, hey, we're just a small little town, you know, can you help us out here? And so we're looking at it, and we're working with the TD, TDA on it, and hopefully we'll make that happen, you know, fit, fit within our budgets. But I think it'd be really good information.
That's interesting, to tell how many people's at the event, you know?
Did I cover everything you really was thinking of? Okay.
I think just stemming from that, we were able to categorize where our, you know, target markets were having the most effect. Maybe that was a separate section, maybe the Raleigh, Raleigh-Durian area had a stronger effect than we had anticipated.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Raleigh and Charlotte were bigger draws for us than Winston-Salem and Greensboro, and, that makes you turn your head, but then at the same time, it lets us know, hey, we need to advertise a little bit better in Winston-Salem and the Greensboro area, because we didn't have as big a draw from there. So, you know, there's good information there, and we don't, we don't wanna waste money. You know, we wanna be good stewards of the funds that we have.
It's really useful information for everybody. We appreciate that.
Anybody else? Thank you, Larry. Blue Ridge Rising program, this part of this?
Yeah, that was all.
Cover it up, so we need to roll down the surplus. All right, surplus vehicle, Daniel Atkins, clerk to the board.
We received this from DSS. They would like to surplus a two thousand and three Chevrolet Cavalier, because they have a new, they received a new vehicle recently, and they no longer need this one. My suggestion is to add it to the other two we've got. All three will run in the paper together next Wednesday, and then we will close the bids on the, that just fell out of my head, sorry, hold on. On February twelfth, that way I can include it with your agenda packets for the meeting on February seventeenth.
You get a sign and put up there.
Mary and I are working on that, it'll be up there tomorrow first thing, we'll have it all ready.
Let everybody know, let everybody know they're up for sale.
Okay, we get a motion for that, just information. Resolution declaring surplus property, Daniel.
This is what we talked about at our last meeting. Resolutions required in order for us to be able to surplus those three extra campers. We double-checked with the time that this has been done before, when we sent it to Haywood County, and that's all the information we need. And we do have a contact that has use for these, is, it's best for us to send it to another county, which, that's what we plan to do, and then they will disseminate the resources wherever they see fit.
We're gonna send these to a different county?
Mm-hmm, in North Carolina.
Do we get to pick the county, or does the state do that?
We can pick the county, but we've already had Daniel Roten reached out to the emergency management director in Ash County, and they have use for it.
So it's up to us, do we make a recommendation to where these are to be sent if we approve this today? Or, no, this isn't for, this isn't for a vote, this is information.
No, this is action, we went over it last time.
So we can go ahead and recommend to a county, or?
You could give them your suggestion, but we have to title these from, they're titled in Allegheny County's name, so they have to be, the best way to do it after we did all of our research is to title it to another county, to transfer it that way. It's much more difficult to put it over into other organizations' names.
Goes from our county government to their county government?
Mm-hmm.
And then, let's just say they go to Ash, then it's up to the Ash commissioners to approve where it goes?
Yes, 'cause it was Daniel's recommendation to send them to Ash, he reached out and spoke with them, so that would be, that's the best way for us to handle it.
We just ask Ash to remember us if the situation is reversed at some time in the future.
We need a motion.
We need a motion in a second to approve this.
I would make a motion that we do these three campers to Ash County, our neighboring county, with going to their county government, their commissioners, to make that decision. And we encourage you to ask the county commissioners in Ash, tell them I support it going to, I'll just go ahead and make that motion, but I do wanna say one thing about, about this living conditions that people are going through. My family has been greatly impacted by this. They lost their house, they lost their cars, they lost their buildings, under mud and everything, and FEMA. under mud and everything. And FEMA has basically been worthless to them and to a lot of their neighbors. FEMA has not done their job down in Adrian County. And I'm hoping that tomorrow with President Trump visiting northwest North Carolina, he'll see how bad the situation is. People that have not seen it cannot believe it. I mean, they literally lost their animals, were washed down the river, their neighbors' houses were washed down the river. These big containers were washed down the river. Their property went up to Kane River and they lost approximately an acre of property. The bridges are gone down there. People can't, it's hard to navigate to get back to some of these houses. And we've got temperatures at five degrees, seven degrees. Some of these people live in tents. FEMA should be ashamed of themselves, but I'll get off that soapbox and go to my recommendation. I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
You did. Do we need to add to that motion if this is, this is declaring surplus property?
At the top of the.
Got a motion in a second. Any further questions? If not, on favor? Five oh. Virginia Carolina Water Authority, Danielle Atkins.
County manager, Mr. Shepley has requested that David Spicer, who's still in here with us, take over his spot on the Virginia Carolina Water Authority in order for that to be official so that David can be a voting part of that organization. We need a motion from the commissioners to remove Mr. Shepley's appointment and then appoint Mr. Spicer into that position. And then I'll, I can send him to Grayson County to get all that stuff handled so he can vote.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not on favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Go on down. Request for proposal fairgrounds, Danielle. Don't you have to do David?
Oh, yeah. No, now you will have to appoint David. Sorry about that. Yeah. That was to remove Mr. Shepley from that appointment and now we need to.
Make a motion to appoint David Spicer, senior project and operations manager.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Not on favor?
One more thing for David to do.
Okay, fairgrounds concessions stand, Danielle.
Um, this was presented at the last meeting and we tabled it to now to get some more information. We had the two bids that we received, two proposals we received. One was from Mountaintop concessions and the other from the Legacy Hospitality and Entertainment Group. The Legacy Hospitality Entertainment Group submitted a percentage initially and Randy's here with us too for other follow-up questions if needed. But they reached back out to them to ask for a figure instead of a percentage because, and we did realize there's a issue with our proposal that we will correct the next time. So we're more specific about which way we prefer for the bid to come in. But they did respond and they submitted a total by email. Courtney spoke with them on the phone and then they sent back the email. And they have offered a flat fee of twenty thousand dollars. And y'all had asked questions last time if the, you went with the percentage, which they had originally submitted the twenty-five percent of their grocery receipts, how they would keep up with that. And they have a point of sale system, internet's available out there at the fairgrounds. They would submit that information to us weekly after each, however we prefer it. For the week long events, they said they could even get us the numbers each day if we preferred it that way.
What was, what was, what was, explain the two B's. We got twenty thousand here for this flat fee.
And they, they also did send in a menu when they responded back with that total. And then Mountaintop Concessions has submitted a bid of five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Flat fee.
So we're, they're saying they would do twenty thousand, not twenty thousand, twenty-five percent of twenty-five, twenty thousand, correct?
They would pay twenty thousand for the bid. Whatever one we want.
What's feeling the board?
I'll make the motion go with the highest bid.
Did they know the bid? Did y'all let the bid out till they know what the bid was?
I'll have to stay in neighbor's home. People home can hear this.
Yeah, bid, was that presented?
I do not know if they knew, I'm, I'm not aware that they knew the bid that was given, not when they were contacted back to ask about it. It was on the last meeting, but they, whenever they. But when they contacted them, it was not brought back to them.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it was no longer a sealed bid. It should be put up.
Put up the what?
Just back up a little.
All right, the question is, if I watch it and I'm going to increase the bid, then I can, right?
Deadline's been come and gone for the presentation of bids, the sealed bids. That part is open.
But they put in the twenty thousand after the sealed bid. Am I correct?
That's true, right?
They put in, they responded with a figure of twenty thousand dollars a flat fee because the rec department reached out to them.
That's what I'm saying, that didn't have the amount.
I don't know that, I can't tell you whether or not they knew what the other bid was. It was in the agenda packet, yes. Always, we reached back out to them and all that was asked of them is for a flat fee figure.
There's a header question.
I can take it for what it's worth.
They still the first time bid twenty-five percent, totally safe.
Then that's probably what you need to figure.
That's probably more money anyway, so.
The, that would have been more and you, you know, that's, this is the reverse of where you would take the lowest possible bid. This would be you take the, the highest possible bid. So with their bid, whether it's the twenty, twenty percent or twenty, twenty-five percent, you know, that, I don't really know if we know exactly how much that's going to end up being, you know, out of the, the sales.
But what I'm saying, you're not allowed to take the twenty thousand bid now legally. You're not allowed to take the twenty after that was open and you released that information.
Unless we figured that it may be the same amount of money. We just don't know because we don't know what the sales are. So, I mean, it could be exactly twenty. I mean, we don't know because we don't, that's not information that the county is typically provided by the, the concessionaire. So we don't, we don't know what that would end up being. So.
You can't accept the twenty thousand bid because after that's open and you released the bid information and that's open to the public.
Can I ask a question? My question, no, question and a comment. When this was originally put out, their bid was opened along with their bid being open. So it became public knowledge. Then the board wanted additional information. So now they go back and give this organization a chance to really change the bid, change their answer to the bid without giving this other concession the same chance to change their bid. I, I don't see this being a very fair thing. I know that, I know that over the years, we've had one concession stand that's treated this county greatly. They stepped up to the plate. This other company, I don't even know. I think they're from out of state someplace, New Jersey or New York or something. I have no track record of what they do, how good their food is or anything like that. I know the quality of the food of the company that's bidding right now.
Well, but you have two options. You can, you can take out of those initial sealed bids, you had two. And you can say that you would take the percentage because that's our, that was bid, that was sealed. Or you could take the other bid, which was a set amount of money. You can take either one of those. That's up to you because those were both sealed. Or you could rebid it, you know, open it up for rebid and do, do the process over again. So you've got those two options.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't give out the numbers and let somebody else bid. I mean, that's just not fair.
But my personal thought is we go twenty-five percent if that's what you want to do today. Or you either rebid the thing in the astray or a flat fee versus.
But I still say you should take in somebody. I'm here. They. Always tell over a hundred kids at Christmas. What did this up do for the kid?
Are the two options to either take the old bids and decide which one we want or to rebid?
Yes.
Those are the two options.
Yes.
I would make a motion to rebid.
The flat fee is probably out.
Well, that wasn't the, it wasn't the first option. I mean, it wasn't in the original bid. So it was either the flat amount or it was the percentage. And that, those are your two options with the initial bid. Correct?
We didn't ask, the other companies start off with were a flat fee. And that's what y'all provided was a flat fee, right?
It's not specified in the proposal.
What's the board want to do? Garrison, you going to say something?
Garrison, you stood in the same place I'm standing today.
Yeah. I've definitely been in a very similar situation. That's, that's what's going on. It's, it's, I mean, in a, in a rebid process, both sides know where the other one initially came in. So you're kind of at a disadvantage on either side. But if we're trying to be fair to all parties involved, I would probably just support a rebid. Unless we went with the original.
You talk to them.
Right, and that's what I was going to say.
I will speak to y'all.
Hang on a second. I think that, you know, if you're going to be fair, then you take the initial and you go with the initial between the two. Because then those were both sealed, they, they were not open, neither party knew. And then that would be the fairest way to go about it. Because now if you rebid, both parties know what the other had already bid. So then on a rebid, then you, you have a competition between the two for what they already know the other one is going to bid or potentially bid. So one may bid lower and one might bid higher. You just, you just don't know. So if you're gonna, if you say you're going to be fair, then I would say that's the initial bids.
I lost thousands of dollars.
Let me say this. Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just going to add to that. If we, in, into support of what Heather was saying, I, I stood to lose several thousand dollars when we rebid it the first time with this job process. It could, it could get messy. So I think we'd probably stick to the original as presented or, or move on, you know, in a, I think we go as they were presented originally. Or both, or both companies should have been contacted to modify.
I'll just go back to our last meeting where we had two vehicles that were up for sale and we took the bids. Then the commissioners decided not to accept those bids and put them out for rebid. To me, this is almost the same thing.
Not the same. Talking about surplus vehicles and that's a different statute versus what this is. So this is totally different. So you, you, you can't, apples to oranges.
What was the statute for this?
I don't know what each statute is offhand. I can tell you just on the surplus vehicles, one sixty-eight, dash two sixty-five. But I don't know the one directly off of this one for the bid. But there are different types of bids and the state has different statutes on how things are bid. This is, the bidding statute is, doesn't have to do anything with your surplus property. That's totally different.
With this, with this being presented the way that it is, how do we know what the twenty-five percent, how do we know that this company tells us what they brought in? What, who, who polices that?
They said that they have a point of sale system and they would turn in receipts and verification, documentation of what was sold.
They've never run a cash register like I have. I've got no, I've got no confidence in twenty-five percent. I don't even know where these figures are that came from. It's saying ninety-six thousand? Is possible, sales? That, I mean, you can pull, you can pull any figures you want to. From some company, you don't have any control over. I know this company. They've been upfront, they've been honest to us. As far as I know, they serve great food. It's caused me to open up my belt one, one week.
Got eight local folks that I hire, lives in this county. I mean, that should mean something. I'm a residence now. I take care of the bathrooms, even on top of Randy or anybody else, just because. I pick up the trash for Randy, just because. Clean the picnic area for Randy, just because, just to make it look nice. I mean, that should mean a whole lot. An individual that's been coming up here since two thousand eleven. Versus somebody in another state.
Makes a whole lot of difference to me.
So that should mean something. But if y'all want to rebid it, I want to step out of it because I need to take my trailer and be putting my applications in somewhere else because that is my income. And let this company have it. Cause twenty thousand dollars, I would let one of y'all see my bookkeeping. I'll show Danielle. In June, I was four hundred and fifty-five dollars this year to the good. And I will show you because I keep very detailed records, good event, vent, bad event, whatever. But if y'all going to rebid it, I want to step out of it. Because I, like I said, I need to do my applications and get my trailers in, my trailer in somewhere else because I have two of them. But I do think that's unfair to rebid it. And twenty thousand dollars. Heck, Derek didn't bid twenty thousand dollars if he's made that kind of money. I didn't. I mean, I said, I'll show you. I'll show two of y'all. Show you two right here. I'll show two people. My bookkeeping. The first year I almost made twenty thousand dollars. Last year I did not. Didn't make half that total for the year, for the year. For the year. You're going to spend two thousand dollars an event for your employees and your supplies, every event. And you hope you have good weather.
I'd make that motion.
And she buys her food from Food Line and from Dirt, uh, not Dirt, but down at True Line.
And all eight employees live right here in this county.
And you do buy food off of Dirt, so, but True Line, she buys a lot of food there. All local, there was a local ball. And you talking about sales tax, that's part of it.
Okay, we got the option of taking as is. We're legally taking either the, the flat fee or the percentage, right? What's the board want to do? What was your motion made ago?
I'll make the motion, take the high bid and twenty-five percent will be the high bid. I'd make the motion.
How do you know that?
My motion was first.
I think his was first.
Greg was first.
Mine was first and Bobby devil.
I'll second that motion.
To accept the twenty-five, forty-five percent, not the twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent.
Give me two seconds. Are we good now? We got a motion second to accept the twenty-five percent from the other group. Any further discussion, comments? Not on favor? Not all in favor? All opposed? Four to one. Okay, move on down to budget amendment.
So the first budget amendment I have for you today is actually the Towns Parta grant that I referenced in the financial report. Uh, it's, the grant is actually for fifteen million dollars, but we're predicting at least a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in interest to be added to that project. I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the grant fund number one for Towns Parta.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five of them.
Okay, the next one is actually the high school project. We need to budget at least a third of that for this fiscal year. Uh, we did set up another fund. I did that also for the Towns Parta project, just to let you know. But, um, what I'm predicting right now is about twenty million dollars, um, paying on the school project for this current fiscal year. Yes.
Motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Continue on.
Okay, your third one is general fund number ten. This is, um, revenues that DSS has received just for Helene recovery. Um, these are restricted funds, so we just need to budget that so they can get those funds back out in the community where needed.
Your motion.
I'll move.
Motion second, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five of them. You know, man.
Believe the next one is, yeah, dispatch, overtime and part-time for dispatch. We've had a couple of people out sick in dispatch, so the overtime line and the part-time line is, is running low. So we're, we're asking to put thirty-five hundred dollars in the part-time pay line, six thousand dollars in the overtime pay and then five hundred additional FICA expense.
Your motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Okay, move on down.
And the last one I have for you this afternoon is actually the community paramedic program that's going to be funded with the opioid revenue. That has been before the board a couple of times, talking about with the health department. This is actually six months of the salary for that paramedic, the FICA retirement and hospital expense. And then the actual vehicle that we, we have purchased, I was looking at David, it's actually sitting at EMS, the QRV. It's a new Equinox.
Open floor for a motion.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on down, Johnny, my just comments, Mr. Bill Shepley.
Thank you. Um, I want to recognize, uh, one of my employees that, uh, kind of went on, went beyond, above and beyond what was expected. And it's Don Mabe at House and Housekeeping. And, uh, I've had five people come into the office today to tell me how beautiful the floors look on, on the upper floor here. And she turned out, she did, she scrubbed those on her hands and knees on, on Sunday, right?
She did it over the holiday, waxed the floor, it looks like it's just been mopped.
Really, yeah, if you see her, please, you know, let her know how much we appreciate what she's done. You know, she, she puts, put her heart into that and she didn't brag to everybody else about it. Just people started saying, wow, that looks great up there, what, you know, what happened? And she did it. Next I want to talk about, I had a, a great meeting with, um, uh, Paulamore and April Maines over at the hospital. And they spent a couple of hours with me and took me on a tour and, um, I know that you all know that I've spent my career in, in healthcare and have visited many, many, uh, smaller hospitals. This one's a top-notch place. You all are in good, we're, we are in good hands under the leadership of these individuals and that facility is sparklingly clean. And they've got the most modern equipment that you could expect a, a, uh, critical access hospital to have. So feel very comfortable with the level of healthcare that you're, it's available to you here in this county. And credit to them for, uh, making that into a reality. I know they had tough time a few years ago and battled their way back and, uh, they're doing really well, so. I was very pleased with that. Just overall, I'm continuing to have the meetings with, you know, folks and getting to, um, what I'm doing is absorbing as much information I can about who are the players in this community? Who are the players within this organization? Um, what are their greatest challenges? What are their greatest needs? What can they tell me that, you know, I need to know in order to make sure that, uh, I am doing everything I can to build the strongest coalition that we can, that we can build? I told you, unity is the, the key to the time that I'm going to be here is building unity between organizations and between individuals. And what I'm, the reason I'm collecting all this information is to start to put together, uh, a strategic plan with specific strategic goals. And that's how I've functioned in the organizations that I've run in the past. So I can't do that without knowing what the resources are, what, what's already in play, you know, in place or is actually happening now. And so I'm beginning that process of developing a strategic plan. In, you know, in, uh, coordination with the development of the new budget, which of course those, those two go hand in hand. But I want you to be able to see at the end of the year, did we accomplish these goals? Are they measurable? Are they accomplished? Are they not, not accomplished? Are they going to be ongoing or are they going to be, you know, and why were they not accomplished? Or, or what can we take on next? I, I want to give you a sort of a way to measure what I perceived as what we should achieve in this, in this year and whether we did it or not. So that's what's going on basically right now. I don't, I don't really have anything else other than to update you there and, um, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Uh, we're, we're very proud of our hospital, like, you gotta have a hospital.
Absolutely.
You gotta have. And they've come a long way, they just put in a new three D imaging machine for the.
So, yeah, it's great.
That'll be a big plus.
Yep.
Okay, county, some extra comments. Garrison, just to start on the way.
I don't have a whole lot to say. Thank everybody for, uh, for the time. I had a lot of cold here lately, looking forward to some warmer weather here in the, in the coming days. Really looking forward to that. Um, and thank you again to, uh, our partners at, uh, Alligator Health over at the hospital. We're, we're very fortunate to have you here in this community. Uh, Paula Moore's, um, been here since Captain W retired and we're fortunate to have her years of experience, uh, leading our hospital into the future.
Bobby? I'd, I'd already talked a while ago about FEMA and how, how I know that, uh, that they've reacted to some people. I, I just, I'm sorry, the federal government has chosen, uh, to put a lot of roadblocks in front of people who need help immediately. Allegheny County was in that category of people, of counties that were listed and we received probably the least amount of damage. We were very lucky. And like I said, if you have not physically seen what happened down, down in west, northwest, in western North Carolina, especially on the, along the Kane River, you would just not believe it. And, uh, I, I would just hope that in the future that some of these people are treated a little bit better than they have been. A shout out to our DOT and this icy cold weather. Uh, we kept the roads really, really good shape. I thought, uh, we've had a lot of our county employees, uh, that, that didn't, couldn't come to work or didn't have to on those bitter cold days. But you also have to remember that probably close to forty or fifty percent of our employees still worked. We still have people at the transfer facility, we still have people at nine-one-one. We had people all over the county that did, that they had to show up. And, uh, I certainly appreciate those. I don't want anybody to get hurt trying to come to work, but we need to recognize those people that have to come to work. So I just have a shout out to them. That's it.
Thank you, Bobby. Greg?
Uh, everybody just stay warm.
Hey, Tammy?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate about, um, to thank all of our, it, January's been a tough month for a lot of people. Every way with the cold weather, the winter weather, something we're not being used to for the last few years. So I just wanted to reiterate our thanks for the ones that tried to trudge on through and, and come to work and doing their jobs and doing everything that they can, um, to make the counting flow smoothly. I wanted to, um, I want to thank Bill Shepley. Not that you get all the thanks, Bill, Bill. I just want to, um, thank you for doing all your due diligence, trying to work through everything, corral the information you can, um, and trying to put all that together to, and I'm glad to hear you say like what your plan is, that's good to hear. So I think it's a good plan, we'll just, uh, we'll see where you take us and so far, so good. Um, the other thing I want to mention is, uh, something we find ourselves into a lot of different times here as county, making decisions about, tough decisions about different things. We're in a small county, we know everybody, we live around everybody. And these decisions that we have to make sometimes, we have to get past the, you know, that's my friend, that's my neighbor. It goes back, the bottom line is it's what's best for Allegheny County as a whole. And that's what we, and sometimes that gets pretty tough because there's family, there's people we know all of our life, we grew up with them. And that's hard sometimes to separate in a small county. And I just want people to know that that's never an easy decision to do those things. But it has to be, our position, our decision needs to be what's best for the Allegheny County and their people. And that's, that's where we have to take our decisions to and people will have to understand that, so. But anyway, I just wanted to, I, you know, again, I don't think we can thank our employees enough. I never really appreciated them as much as I should have when I was out and doing my work and going about my business and I never realized what all the work they did and just like what you're talking about. You know, Dawn doing the job that she does, nobody, nobody really knows that much unless it's pointed out. And that's, that's to, that, that's a perfect example of what kind of team that this county has. And you know, a lot of that goes back to Michael putting all that together. And, um, I am so thankful for that because that makes our job easier. So I just, just want to say those things, but thanks.
Thank you, Tammy. Tammy's covered the bases there, I agree with everything he says. And decisions are tough and, and, but like he says, at the end of the day, it's, it's to do what the county is best for the county. And that ain't always popular with a lot of people, but that's why we're here, you know? And I'd just like to thank Larry Van Who's back there for the job he's doing with Chambers. They, they've come a long ways and we appreciate that. And the DOT crews, the town maintenance and all the contract folks, they've done a super good job of all this ice and snow and sleet and zero weather we've had, they, they've all got right in there and got the job done. We appreciate it. And just if you, when the cold weather comes, check on your neighbors, you know? Check on the old folks that might be down the road a mile or two, call them, drop by. Take care of your livestock and pets and animals, that's, that's another big thing. That being said, anybody else got anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one thing. Um, we had started a process, um, before you guys got on the board, before Bill came, uh, having meetings with the Fairgrounds because this brings up like what we're working on today. You know, we, we had proposed, uh, Courtney was part of this and Randy proposed a, because I think our, our fee structure and different things sort of got out of whack after COVID. And we were having these ongoing meetings with the, uh, Fairgrounds Committee. We proposed this, they came back and proposed another thing and then we got involved in all the school stuff. And, uh, I do think we really need to, I don't know when, what, how, let y'all figure that out. But I do think we need to continue that to where if we're going to make any changes of that fee structure and stuff, it really needs to be in place when we do, when we, uh, finish our budget and for the next budget year. So I think, and I've really got some good feedback from some of the committee people, like they were really, into what we were talking about and I really think we need to keep it going because if we stop and we'll be back at it another time. So, uh, maybe reach out to Zach, um, see if we can, and maybe have another work session or something. And then, and then iron out, because I know they came back with their last numbers. They did come back with, didn't they propose some numbers?
They did, but they.
Was it the same thing?
Well, they're supposed to be at the next meeting. They're coming with their, that agreement, the user agreement that we've got. They never come back to us with that, which enter, it all incorporates that fee structure that we work, we had been working on.
Right.
And there's a couple of other things that they're bringing back to us, so.
We, yeah, we need to keep that.
Once we get that information from them, that we can keep moving forward like we were planning on doing.
Okay.
They got them with the bad weather because you know Zach's involved with helping clear roads, so.
Okay.
But they have been working on that and they, uh, we talked with Steve Mason just this week and they're, they'll be at the next meeting with that information to present to us.
Well, that's good, that's all, thanks.
All right, anybody else, Bill? Everybody's done, call for a motion to, to adjourn. Motion second, all in favor? Thank y'all, thank everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're supposed to sign one of these. All supposed to sign one of these.